Commissioners meeting this eighth day of August 2017. I'm Commissioner Cupid and as Vice Chair, I will be heading today's meeting in light of our Chairman's absence. As we normally do, we'll begin with our invocation and pledge. Our invocation will be brought today by Reverend Eunice Farha, pastor of First Asian Indian Baptist Church in Marietta, Georgia. He will be followed by firefighter Sean Davis out of Station 14, C Shift, and he's been with Cobb County since May 2015.
Let us pray. Gracious, loving, and heavenly Father, this morning we step into your presence thanking you and praising you for your goodness, grace, and mercy. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us in the form of families, friends, homes to live in, and fine protection and shelter in our neighborhoods. We thank you, Lord, for the many institutions that are provided by you to take care of our needs. And especially this morning, we praise you for our Cobb County and especially its commissioners as they decide issues to help its citizens to live decent, dignified, and protected lives. We pray for all the citizens, the many institutions of Cobb County which help people to live and develop lives through their schools, colleges, and other centers that provide education and training. We pray for all of our security agencies, health, and hospitals, Lord, who work for our safety, protection, and health. We pray for them. We also claim your protection for our police force who work tirelessly for our safety. And especially, we also remember the courts, Lord, those who work to provide justice. We pray that you will grant them great wisdom and a sense of justice. And we also thank you, Lord, for the many churches and other places where pastors and staff who serve you to provide the spiritual health and growth of our county. Lord, bless them all. We especially pray that as we live in an age of terror, that we will be kept safe from these evil forces of darkness, defeat, disease, and destruction by your powerful hand. And in the end, we pray that you will bless America, help it to grow and prosper, and make it to be a shining city on a hill, Lord. Bless and guide our President, his administration, and those who serve this nation. And also, Lord, I pray that you will help us to live in your fear. Lord, you see us hurrying through a brief span of life on earth. You also see us as your beings engineered for eternity but made prisoners of time because of our disobedience. Help us, Lord, to live in obedience for your eternal glory and purposes. And once again, I pray that you will bless the entire proceeding of today's meetings. In your mighty, precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now moving to Tab 4, which is our presentation tab. We have one tab today, which is to present a proclamation to recognize the Cobb County Safety Bullets. We thrive in Riverside Renters Association and other community members in honor of National Night Out observed on Tuesday, August 8, 2017. If those who are here for this proclamation can join me up front. We just happen to be very close with each other when it comes to public safety in our community, and that's a good thing. We have members of our community in the Riverside Six Flags area of Cobb County and of Precinct 2 and of public safety in Cobb County. I'm delighted today to present a proclamation, again, in honor of National Night Out on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas National Night Out is observed around the country to promote building strong neighborhoods and community partnerships with law enforcement and public safety departments, neighborhoods host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, seminars, and youth events across our country. And whereas this annual observance was created to increase awareness about police programs in communities, including drug prevention, town watches, and neighborhood watches, National Night Out events allow residents to mix and mingle and help their community while building positive relationships with first responders. And whereas in the Austell and Riverside community, National Night Out events have been held yearly since 2009, including resident meetings, community block parties, movie screenings, and special presentations. Over the past eight years, We Thrive and Riverside Renters Association has been a driving force behind National Night Out events in Austell and Riverside. And whereas this year, the Public Safety Education Block Party is held on August 8 at the South Cobb Recreation Center. There will be food, fun, and music, as well as representatives from police and fire departments, 911, the Community Emergency Response Team, the Austell Community Task Force, Animal Control, the Neighborhood Safety Commission—come on up, ladies—Safe Kids Cobb County, National Night Out Against Crime, and We Thrive and Riverside Renters Association. We have some members from the organization who've just joined us. We've had some inclement weather this morning, so glad that they're here for this presentation, ladies and gentlemen. Why don't you come up here? You're welcome. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby encourage residents to celebrate National Night Out by bringing their families and neighbors to the block party. This will help continue strengthening the bonds in our community. Again, this the eighth day of August 2017. Thank you so much for all that you guys do. Would you like to share any words?
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. We have some T-shirts for the Commissioners and Rain or Shine we're going on tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If we can have a word from those in our precinct about this event?
The event is held actually twice a year, once down in the Riverside area and once usually over in the Precinct 3 area. And it's designed, as Commissioner Cupid stated, to interact with the community, teach children and adults about safety issues in the community, and have some fun. You'll see Captain Hamilton dance tonight, I'm sure, so that'll be nice. But I would like to say on a personal note, thank you to Monica and her organization and all the community members that help us. But honestly, Monica is the most impactful and helpful to the police department. So I appreciate that from a personal and a professional level. Thank you.
Yeah, we also take an opportunity twice a year to hold these block parties, and we saw it fitting this year to join that with the National Night Out so that we can strengthen relationships in the community. Just for instance, last week, we were recognizing a gentleman in this area for aiding our investigators to solve an arson case, and we made that presentation last Friday. And those are the kinds of things that we're looking to do in the community because, as a community, we can get a lot of things done versus just us trying to do it ourselves in public safety. So we appreciate Monica, the partnership that you've helped develop between the fire department as well and all of public safety. So thank you.
Can you introduce yourself? What is your name?
My name is Geneva Vanderhorst, and I'm with Sting Inc. We are a youth nonprofit organization that operates in the South Cobb community, and we are partners with We Thrive on Riverside Renters Association.
Good morning. My name is Scott Hamilton. I'm the captain, Assistant Precinct Commander at Precinct 2. And I also want to thank Ms. Monica for all the work that she's done, and I also thank the Commissioners for this proclamation, and I am the dancer of the group.
Good morning. Deborah Johnson, Chair for the Austell Community Task Force. And I want to commend Monica for starting the Safety Bliss and We Thrive on the Drive. You're doing a wonderful job, and thank you for their partnership.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, Monica, you spoke with the— Just let us know who you are.
Hi, I'm Breon Perkins. I'm Monica's daughter. I'm a senior at Pebblebrook High School.
Hi, I'm Sequan Hubert. I work closely with Monica Delancey with We Thrive on Riverside, and she's doing a phenomenal job with a lot of the different initiatives that she does in the community. And I'm very grateful that she always considers me and calls on me to help out with a lot of different community initiatives.
Good morning. My name is Trey Hutchins, and I'm here supporting Monica. I also work with Monica with State of Our Schools. We help inform our residents and our community in regards to the importance of school council within our South Cobb schools. So I'm the Chair of the School Council at Bryant Elementary, and I also am the PTSA President at Pebblebrook High School.
Hello. My name is Edward Brown. I graduated from Pebblebrook. I usually help out. Monica, by the way, Monica, you're doing a great job.
And thank you, Commissioner Cupid. You're doing a great job as well.
Thank you, Monica. There's a recurring theme here, Monica, and we thank you for all the work that you've done in our community. With that, why don't we line up and take a picture? Well, first, let's give them a round of applause for all their hard work. Yes, those in the organization, if you line up so we can get a picture. If somebody can just—
Come on back.
Okay, we're gonna do a couple more. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate the gifts. Now, we can all represent We Thrive in Riverside. You're welcome. Okay, with that, we are turning to Tab 4. We will have a presentation by Dana Johnson to conduct a public hearing regarding the initial draft of the 2040 Cobb County Comprehensive Plan.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. Thank you very much, and I'm going to shortly introduce Mr. Gaines, Jason Gaines, Planning Division Manager for Cobb County. He'll be coming up and doing this presentation for us. Just a bit of background information, for the past two years, Cobb County Community Development has been working with the citizens as well as other members of Cobb County in order to put together a draft document that kind of sets out our vision forward for 2040. And Mr. Gaines is going to just give a brief overview of all of the efforts that we have done in regard to this. And at the conclusion of this presentation, Madam Chair, we'll ask if you would please open a public comment period, official public comment period, for this as part of the required public hearings. Thank you. Mr. Gaines?
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, Jason Gaines, Cobb Community Development. Here to give a brief overview of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the planning process associated with it. Again, this is a public hearing which will give the citizens an opportunity to provide comment on the initial draft that has been posted on the county's website. This slide just gives a brief overview of the process in developing the plan. You got check marks next to the items that have been completed to date, and then you have the two remaining items at the bottom, the public comment period, which is currently in process, and then review and adoption. And at the end of my presentation, I'll go over the timeline leading up to adoption of the plan. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about our community involvement process. Like with any process, planning process, community engagement is a critical, critical piece. We don't like to go out and put forward plans that reflect a view that is anything other than what the community has put forth. So public involvement was critical. As part of it, we had a steering committee assembled representing various sectors of the Cobb County community. All the members were vetted by the Board of Commissioners, and we conducted five meetings with the steering committee and then had individual interviews with them as well, over 40 of them. Several community public meetings and workshops throughout the county, two different rounds. We had a round of four, then a round of five in the spring of 2016, then a community open house in October and November of 2016. Next slide, please. We had a heavy presence on the web and with social media through Facebook and Twitter. We worked with the Burrus Institute at Kennesaw State to conduct a telephone survey, which had just short of 2,500 responses. The target was 2,500, but we had to throw out two because the phone numbers that were registered were not belonging to Cobb County citizens, so we had to throw those two out. We've had three Board of Commissioners' work session presentations to date, as well as we haven't had four public hearings yet. This is the third of four public hearings. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about the plan components. We've got the plan development document, which was unveiled to the public in April of 2015, which was essentially the beginning of the overall comprehensive planning process. There was a public review period that coincided with the release of the plan development document, which basically laid the framework for how the plan is to be developed. Then below that, you get into the actual comprehensive plan document and all of its internal components, including a profile that basically describes the community, a description of the community engagement process, the community work program, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, small area policy guidelines, reports of accomplishments from what we had with our 2030 Comprehensive Plan, supplemental plan synopsis, a survey report, and regional water planning and environmental criteria. Next slide, please. Now, we'll get a little bit into the plan elements. Every comprehensive plan in the state of Georgia has three core elements. You've got your needs and opportunities, which describe the immediate challenges facing a community. You've got the goals and policies, which create a broad vision for where your county wants to go. And then you've got the community work program, which is a list of action steps, including projects, designed to address the needs and work towards achieving the vision. Again, those are the core elements. Every comprehensive plan for every city and county in the state of Georgia is required to have those core elements. Then, because of Cobb County's other statuses, if you will, we have other elements that are required. We're required to have a housing element based on the fact that we are a HUD-entitled community. Example, we receive CDBG funding, so we're a HUD-entitled community. We have to have a housing element because of that. We have to have a land use element because we have a zoning ordinance. And then we have to have a transportation element because we are within the boundaries of a Metropolitan Planning Organization, NARC, the Atlanta Regional Commission. Next slide, please. Okay. Then we've got these additional optional elements that we've also included in our plan. So you've got a total of 12 elements that you can possibly have in your comprehensive plan, and we have created elements or sections describing elements for all 12 within our 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Next slide, please. You see we're at today, August 8. This is public hearing number three, as I mentioned previously. The next Board of Commissioners meeting on August 22, we will also have a public hearing. It'll be the final one. September 12, we will come back to the Board to request authorization to submit the draft plan to ARC for the regional review. The regional review is required—it doesn't look at the actual plan content, but it does look at whether or not each of the base requirements are being met. The plan is basically developed on the foundation of minimum planning standards that are set by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. So what ARC will be doing is to make sure that we are meeting all of those baseline requirements. And they take a minimum—or, excuse me, they take a maximum of 40 days to do so. So September 12 is a very important date because of that 40-day maximum. Assuming that they take that entire time, we would need to have something back from ARC stating that we've met all of the requirements by October 31. That's another key date. I'll come back to that other September 12 item here in a second, but I want to jump to October 31 real quick. That is the deadline for our qualified local government status expiring. If we have a plan, if we have notice back from ARC stating that we've met the baseline requirements, then our qualified local government status will essentially be in position to be reinstated or renewed for the next term. We lose that status, then it puts us in a position where we could potentially lose eligibility for various state and federal grants. So that's a very important date. Now, coming back to September 12, service delivery strategy recertification, along with the comprehensive plan being submitted for regional review, we have to ensure that our service delivery strategy with cities in Cobb is recertified as well. And that's something that we talk about annually in our retreat with the cities in February of every year, and we'll talk a little bit more about that that's coming for February for sure. But we have a series of forms that we have to get all the cities to sign off on in order to make sure that our service delivery strategy is recertified. That, combined with a comprehensive plan that meets the minimum planning standards, ensures that our qualified local government status can be renewed. That is the end of my presentation. Next slide, please. For more information, including an opportunity to view the draft document, you can visit the Cobb Community Development webpage. We are going to have an updated draft of the plan posted here probably within the next week or so, and we will continue to take public comment as well as comment from you the Commissioners leading up to a final, final draft that we look to bring to you on September 12 for authorization to submit to the ARC. And with that, ask there any questions? And from there, I'd ask if you'd open up the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions? Okay, with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes, and there is no limit on the number of speakers. Are there any—okay, we have at least one speaker who wishes to speak on this item. If you can state your name prior to speaking. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Jan Barton. I live in East Cobb. While we appreciate the efforts on the staff's part and the Commissioners, we ask, is the 2040 Plan really designed by the taxpayers of Cobb County? We respectfully answer, no, it is not. Rather, it is designed by all the moneyed special interests who do not have our best interest in mind. It is a cookie cutter, cut-and-paste plan, making every community the same ugly design throughout the region.
Next slide.
Smart growth is part of the comprehensive plan, and it generates vast fiscal deficits in every study that's been done. The biggest federal study, The Cost of Sprawl, proved that even the best-case smart-growth scenario generated big losses. Smart growth is not smart from an economic point of view. New urbanists figured that if you put people closer together so they could almost shake hands across balconies, you've created a sense of place, a soul, that's desirable. We disagree.
Next, please.
Dense development is unsustainable. One-third of all the land ever developed in the U.S. was done in the last 25 years. Farming is steadily declining as farmers become subdivisions. The U.S. became a net food importer in 2005 for the very first time.
Next, please.
This slide lists just a few examples of objectionable language in the 2040 Plan. Mixed-use development permeates the entire document.
Next, please.
Mixed-use development is overtaking nearby Sandy Springs. Sandy Springs Mayor Rusty Paul is quoted as saying that the Pill Hill mixed-use apartment project is a big experiment to see if people will truly live close to where they work. At least 10% of the units are affordable housing. It is highly likely that most Cobb residents would rather not experiment with our futures with concrete jungles of mixed-use development that can potentially fail.
Next, please.
This is a list of the grants available for the Development Authority-driven program, qualified local government status, which was previously mentioned. The taxpayers of Cobb County want to know if these so-called grants cost us more than they are worth. Why take them and all their strings attached? Shouldn't our elected representatives listen to what we want? The soft law that says the Development Authority may give advice on comprehensive plans does not mean we must take such advice. We think our legislators should repeal that soft law.
Last slide, please.
In closing, we, the people of Cobb County, are asking our elected officials to represent our wishes, not those of special interests. The 2040 Plan in both content and process is flawed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other additional speakers?
I'll be pretty brief. My name is Joe O'Connor. I live in East Cobb. This is the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and as part of the vision statement, I'm going to read one paragraph. Cobb County's transportation system will be environmentally compatible, financially sound, safe, and in efficient and functional network, providing multimodal service to all areas of the county. Founded on partnerships between public, private, and nonprofit organizations, Cobb County's transportation network will be integrated with local and regional land use and transportation plans and supportive of a variety of uses, including significant green space and live, work, and play communities. That's one paragraph of the vision. I hope the Board remembers that, pulls this out, puts it on your desk there, and looks at it every time you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other additional speakers? Okay.
I'll be pretty brief. My name is Joe O'Connor. I live in East Cobb. This is the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and as part of the vision statement, I'm going to read one paragraph. Cobb County's transportation system will be environmentally compatible, financially sound, safe, and in efficient and functional network, providing multimodal service to all areas of the county. Founded on partnerships between public, private, and nonprofit organizations, Cobb County's transportation network will be integrated with local and regional land use and transportation plans and supportive of a variety of uses, including significant green space and live, work, and play communities. That's one paragraph of the vision. I hope the Board remembers that, pulls this out, puts it on your desk there, and looks at it every time you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further direction?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll see you on the 22nd.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, with that, we are moving on to Tab 5, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. How many speakers do we have?
Chairman, we only have one speaker that signed up.
One speaker? Okay.
Mr. Burkinby?
Vice Commissioner, Commissioner, County Manager, David Burkinby, an unmedical burn ban. The United States Government in 2003, November, signed a proclamation that'd be a National CLPD Month, and that'd be in November. Georgia also done the same thing. Cobb County hasn't recognized it as a problem. Now, there's a third cause of death in the United States, according to the National Heart, Lung, and Blood Institute. The National Institute of Health is also backed by it. There's $49.9 billion spent on this disease a year. That cost is—the cost of the economy, ER visits, hospital stays, and lost the productivity to the workforce. 13.1 million have been diagnosed with a problem in the United States. 12 million don't know they have it yet. Among those living with CLPD, there's 51% with limited work capabilities, and 53%— and fifty-three percent that are on limited activity. To us, it seems small because we're seven hundred thousand people in Cobb County, only twenty percent. But we need to take this seriously as we do breast cancer, heart disease, asthma, uh, any breathing problem that these people have. They were given the law to having medical burn ban. Yet we hopefully are on the path of getting this corrected with not wording, just the law that's already there on the books that is stated so many times on what the fire department can do. You just can't, after you give somebody, after you give somebody a ban or, or a privilege, don't okay something else to take that privilege away and make it null and void and exempt. You didn't exempt burning. You exempt the medical problem. You exempted the people that had the breathing problem, the asthma people, the heart people, anybody with a medical condition that it's going to affect. And, you know, it's, it's not a total burn ban to all of Cobb County. You're talking a thousand foot. Like, the people that are sick, they'll put up with it when they drive around Georgia, when they drive around Cobb County, when they drive around Fulton County, or wherever they go. They're not exempt from all the smoke, but give them a break. Usually, they lived in the community for a long time. They're going to be like me, my generation. They're going to be the old people that smoke, the people that didn't, didn't get it when they was younger. Now we're paying the price. So, you know, we're just going to have to do something for them and just pick up the banner for them, pick up the torch and say, hey, okay, you were, you weren't smart then, but everybody has a vice. And sometimes that vice kisses up with you, whether it be smoking, drinking, environment, or whatever. And most of the people are protected under it. People, you know, they just, you know, if you're in a wheelchair, you're protected. If you're in disability or any other disability, you're protected. You have rights. But people with medical burn ban, they have it on the books, but they have, they have no protection. They have nobody standing up for them. So we need to really look at it and, and, and apply the law in interpretation and get it down to one between the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkinbye. That concludes our public comment period. Next, we will move to tab six, which is our consent agenda. I would like the board's approval to add the following non-agenda items to this agenda for consideration. This includes item number twenty-nine, which is to authorize settlement of Jennifer Phoenix versus Cobb County, Georgia, in civil action file, number which I won't state, in the United States District Court. Also, and to add item number thirty, which is to authorize settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Stefan Rose.
Motion to add is presented.
Okay. Call the question? Okay, that motion passes four to zero. For those watching from home, okay, for those watching from home, the consent agenda is scrolling on the screen.
Motion approved.
Okay, with that, their motion to approve. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, call the question?
All right, well, um, don't you want to, as part of the motion, um, there's a revage at the end? Okay. That includes the.
Was there a second? Okay, call the question? Okay, the motion passes four to zero. With that, we are moving on to tab six, which is our transportation agency agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. We have ten items this morning. Our first item is to approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvements Program, funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax. The proposed, the proposed revised budget for the 2016 S P L O S tip includes all projects approved at the exception of the program, all previous board approved, new budget transfers and adjustment to various projects, and will be funded primarily with the 2016 S P L O S revenues and interest. Other revenue sources in the proposed budget include the Department, Georgia Department of Transportation, the Cumberland Community Improvement District, the Town Center Community Improvement District, and miscellaneous revenues. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax.
All right, thank you. This agenda item in fact impacts all of our districts. So I'll turn to you, Commissioner Otis, the liaison for transportation.
Okay, motion to approve, um, as presented.
Call the question? Okay, the motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two is to authorize settlement of Cobb County, Georgia versus Pilot Travel Centers LLC, PAP Enterprises, Inc., et al., Superior Court of Cobb County, Georgia Civil Action File Number one-three dash one dash nine seven three eight dash five one, and authorize counsel to prepare and execute all necessary documents for the purpose of settling ongoing litigation. Legal counsel and the parties have negotiated a settlement of Cobb County, Georgia versus Pilot Travel Centers LLC, PAP Enterprises, Inc., et al., Superior Court of Cobb County, Georgia Civil Action File Number one-three dash one dash nine seven three eight dash five one. Counsel will prepare the appropriate documentation consistent with the Board of Commissioners' direction as discussed in executive session on June 12th, 2017. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize settlement of Cobb County, Georgia versus Pilot Travel Centers LLC, PAP Enterprises, Inc., et al., Superior Court of Cobb County, Georgia Civil Action File Number one-three dash one dash nine seven three eight dash five one, as directed during executive session on June 12th, 2017, and further authorize counsel to prepare and execute all necessary documents for the purposes of settling ongoing litigation.
Okay, Commissioner Otis.
Motion to approve is presented.
Call the question? Okay, the motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number three is to approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for improvements on Bells Ferry Road at Barrett Parkway Piedmont Road. Bells Ferry at Barrett Parkway Piedmont Road is an approved project in the roadway safety and operational improvements component of the two thousand and five S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of two million, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents from Glosson Enterprises LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of one million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy cents in roadway costs and one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents in water system costs. The scheduled completion date for this project is three hundred and sixty-five consecutive calendar, calendar days from the note, issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed two million, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents for improvements on Bells Ferry Road at Barrett Parkway Piedmont Road.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, thanks, Jim. This is going to be a much-needed improvement in that area. What are we doing to notify the neighborhoods and commercial businesses and especially Bells Ferry Elementary?
Once we've got notice to proceed on, with contract, we will notice, notify everybody that's affected by this.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number four is to approve a contract with Accelera Construction LLC for Providence Road Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred from Accelera Construction LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is forty-six, forty-five consecutive calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars for Providence Road Sidewalk.
Okay, Commissioner Otis.
Motion to approve.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number five is to approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with C W Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. for thoroughfare improvements on South Barrett Reliever Phase Two. South Barrett Reliever Phase Two is an approved thoroughfare improvements project in the 2011 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. Supplemental, supplemental agreement number one to the contract with C W Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents is requested for additional water-related work items. In addition, the contract time extension through May thirty-first, 2018 is also requested to allow for completion of the additional work. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with C W Matthews Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents for thoroughfare improvements on South Barrett Reliever Phase Two, to include a contract time extension through May thirty-first, 2018.
Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. This also is a much-needed project that continues, and I know, I appreciate the public's patience going through here as, as I do frequently. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number six, to approve change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for roadway safety and operational improvements on Floyd Road. Floyd Road is an approved project in the roadway safety and operational improvements component of the 2011 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete and change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents is requested due to variations between the final and original planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven dot, seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents for roadway safety and operational improvements on Floyd Road.
That's a significant savings for a significant project in this area. It's nice to close this out. With that, motion to approve?
Second.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number seven is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for drainage system improvements on Brookview Drive. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete and change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents for drainage system repairs on Brookview Drive.
I believe this is Commissioner Otis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number eight is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for drainage system repairs on Castle Bar Court. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete and change order number one final to the contract, to the contract Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-five cents is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-five cents for drainage system repairs on Castle Bar Court.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for drainage system repairs on East Brandon Drive. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete and change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents for drainage system repairs on East Brandon Drive.
All right. Commissioner Burrow?
Uh, motion to approve.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our final item is to approve a recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Campus Loop Road, Big Shanny Road, Chastain Road. Campus Loop Road, Big Shanny Road, Chastain Road is an approved intersection safety and operational improvement project in the 2016 S P L O S Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Campus Loop Road, Big Shanny Road, Chastain Road, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm Thompson Engineering, Inc. utilizing selection process number one, competitive negotiations.
All right, Commissioner Burrow? Motion to approve? Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, we have our Public Services Agency tab with Director Jimmy Giese.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our first item this morning is for the board to rescind a previously awarded contract with A B Construction and Development LLC for the repair and renovation of the restroom and sanitary piping at the Mountain View Community Center and to award a contract to W E Contracting Company for the same work. Atlantic Building Specialties was unable to meet the county's requirements for, for performance and payment bonds for this project. Therefore, we're asking the board to rescind the previous awarded contract with A B Construction Development and approve a contract with W E Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the repair and renovation of the restrooms and sanitary sewer piping at the Mountain View Community Center under the two thousand and sixteen Parks S P L O S Program.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you, Jimmy. And what's our scheduled completion date?
We're good with the timeframe.
The end of September?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Our final item this morning is for the board to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the contract with W E Contracting Company for the renovation of sixteen softball field dugouts at Lost Mountain Park under the two thousand and eleven Parks S P L O S Program. The project included renovations to all of the dugouts at the upper and lower hubs in the park, including expanding their size, uh, new roofs, concrete pads, and benches. And these improvements provide significant benefits to our program participants. Therefore, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to approve this final closeout supplemental agreement and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollar deductive change order with W E Contracting, Inc. for the renovation of sixteen softball fields at Lost Mountain Park under the two thousand and eleven Parks S P L O S Program.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Motion to approve these savings. Second.
Call the question? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next tab we have is tab nine. I'm sorry, Director, I have tab nine next, which is Support Services.
My bad. I don't want to do that one.
I'm sure Scott won't mind.
I'm just so excited.
You woke us all up there.
Well, good, well, good morning, Vice Chair and Commissioners and County Manager. Property has one item, and it's for the restoration of the existing roof at the State Court Building. Uh, the restoration an eligible capital improvement project under the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S Program. The project will be completed utilizing a U.S. Communities Purchasing Agreement with Garland Design Build Solutions Incorporated, which is, which is an authorized vendor. Funding is available in the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S Roofing Repair and Replacement. Property management requests the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Garland Design Build Solution Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars utilizing the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S funds for restoration of the existing roof at the State Court Building located at twelve East Park Square and authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you, Scott. Very well presented. Motion to approve?
Call the question? I'm sorry, Commissioners, I believe that was in, yes, call the question. Motion passes four to zero. I believe that's in Commissioner Burrow's district, but yes, our liaison is Commissioner Otis. I think we're good. Yes, we're good here. Thank you, Mr. Burkinbye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to tab ten, which is now our Public Safety Agency Agenda.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. Your purpose today is to authorize purchase of hardware, software, radio equipment installation, and engineering services for the MOSCAD upgrades to the county's seventy-four siren outdoor warning system. Cobb County Emergency Management maintains the outdoor system of seventy-four sirens. Additionally, the system consists of three separate activation consoles located at the E O C nine-one-one and the nine-one-one backup center. Each activation console includes software to automate the system, which improves activation time during inclement weather. The current weather siren system technology is, and ended its production life and must be upgraded to enable these sirens to work properly. Alcom Wireless, Inc. is the only company in the Southeast that is both motorola reseller and dealer for the wheeling sirens and is considered the sole source qualified vendor to perform the siren activation upgrades. Cobb County has approved funds in the amount of, not to exceed nine hundred and thirty-six thousand for the radio. of not to exceed $936,000 for the radio upgrade and siren replacement for the 2016 SPOS Countywide Program Fund. Therefore, I'm asking the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of the hardware, software, radio equipment and installation, and engineering services for the MOSCAD upgrades to the county's 74-siren outdoor warning system, and upgrade 10 sirens to the wheeling Vortex sirens in an amount not to exceed $936,000 from Alcomm Wireless, Inc., and authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. I assume they're going to be louder now?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to be louder?
No, sir, they won't be.
Let's just skip this tab.
No, sir, they won't be any louder, but they will be able to work when activated.
Oh, well, that's even better. So, they will be louder because they were usually quiet, right?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Call a question? Motion passes for zero. Okay, we next have our Tab Twelve, or excuse me, Tab Eleven, which is with the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager.
Yes, good morning.
Five items for you this morning regarding continued renovations at the jail. Colonel Roland Craig with Sheriff's Office. The first one is regarding a section of roof replacement on the A Building. The building 30 years old now, and we've been experiencing a problem with it. It's a flat roof system, and some of the substructure is going to have to be replaced at this point. And the Sheriff's Office requests the Board of Commissioners ratify the continued renovation efforts of the Adult Detention Center, and authorize replacement of A Building's central support area roof using Garland DBS, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $107,900 as part of 2016 SPOS. Approved funding for the required contingency solutions to be procured through the purchasing department in an amount not to exceed $16,185. Authorize Sheriff's Office to negotiate terms and conditions of the contract in consultation with County Attorney's Office. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. And just to emphasize, all of these projects that you're going to present are in the 2016 SPOS funding.
Yes, sir.
So, not general fund. Great. Thank you. Motion to approve is presented.
Call a question? Motion passes for zero.
The second item is regarding cell door motors. Here again, it's in a 30-year-old section of the building, originally started construction in '84, occupied in '87. These motors drive the mechanical doors in two of the housing pods, A and D. We ask the Board of Commissioners to ratify the continued renovation efforts at Adult Detention Center, and authorize replacement of 20 cell block slider door motor assemblies from Willow Products Company, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $25,138.20 as part of the 2016 SPOS. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
A motion to approve is presented.
Call a question?
Third item refers to the emergency exit doors in the same housing area of the A Building. We ask the Board of Commissioners to ratify the continued renovation efforts at Adult Detention Center, and authorize replacement of emergency exit fire doors in Building A from Cornerstone Institutional, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $102,851 as part of this 2016 SPOS. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve is presented.
Call a question?
Fourth item is G-Pod roof and rooftop air handling unit replacement. This building was the first building built in the '97 jail construction project. So, it's 20 years old now. Roof is 20 years old, as is the air handling unit. Experiencing leaks with the roof and air handling units that end up like a deficiency. We ask the Board of Commissioners to ratify the continued renovation efforts at Adult Detention Center, and authorize the G-Pod roof replacement from Garland DBS, Incorporated, and the RTU replacement from Johnson Control, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $240,957 as part of 2016 SPOS. Approved funding for any required contingency solutions to be procured through the purchasing department in an amount not to exceed $24,096. Authorize Sheriff's Office to negotiate terms and conditions of the contract in consultation with County Attorney's Office. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve is presented.
Call a question? Motion passes for zero.
Last item is reference to washer and dryer replacement. These are large, industrial-sized washer and dryers. The manufacturer uses a little fancier name regarding the washers, calling them extractors, and then tumblers for the dryers, but these service the whole complex, all the jail buildings, all inmates, clothes, sheets, shoes, anything has to be washed, runs through these machines. Two of them have already failed and not repairable. And we ask the Board of Commissioners to ratify the continued renovation efforts at ADC, and authorize purchase of washer, extractors, and drying tumblers from Southeastern Laundry Equipment Sales in an amount not to exceed $117,150 as part of 2016 SPOS. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Weatherford?
Yeah, motion to approve is presented.
Call a question? Motion passes for zero. That concludes that tab. Thank you. Next, we have Tab Twelve, which is our Community Development Appeals Hearing to address an alcohol permit. Out of consensus with the Board, we decided to move that tab towards the end of our agenda. So, what we'll do is we'll move that tab after Tab Fourteen, which is our Board Appointments, and then come back to that if that's okay with Counsel. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have Tab Thirteen, which is our next public comment.
There's no one that signed up for it.
All right, no speakers. So, then we'll go to Tab Fourteen, which is the Appointment Tab. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. I'd like to...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Weatherford. Let me preface that. This tab is to approve the appointment of C.B. Fair to the Appointment Advisory Board to replace Carter Chapman. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. I'd like to make a recommendation, Board, to approve the appointment of C.B. Fair to the Airport Advisory Board replacing Carter Jackman, who has moved out of the county.
Call a question? Motion passes for zero. All right, with that, we will go back to Tab Twelve, but before we do that, why don't we go ahead and just take a five-minute break? And then we'll come back, and we will have our public hearing for the appeal for the alcohol permit. Thank you. Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We are now at Tab Twelve, which is the Community Development Hearing. Today, we have a hearing to address an appeal of denial of the application for Cobb County alcohol permit of Ms. Sarah Hensley to serve alcohol in unincorporated Cobb. I'll turn things over to our attorney, Sam Hensley.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Again, for the benefit of the applicant, I am Sam Hensley, Jr. No relation to the applicant, just to clarify, and I'm sure she's glad to hear that as well. As you mentioned, we are here today on an appeal of an administrative denial of her application for an alcohol work permit to serve alcohol in Cobb County. The Business License Division originally denied this application due to disqualifying offenses that appear under the Cobb Alcohol Code 6-206 and 6-207. As you're aware, those code sections list a variety of criminal and other offenses that are automatic disqualifiers for the granting of an alcohol work permit. Those denials are appealable, and in fact, this case came before the License Review Board on May 11th of this year. At that time, the LRB voted 5-0 to uphold the administrative suspension. As a point of clarification, Madam Chairwoman, the rules of the Georgia Criminal Information Center do not allow testimony from my witness to get into the specifics of those disqualifying offenses, although I'm sure Ms. Hensley will be happy to discuss those. We will simply be presenting testimony that there were, in fact, these disqualifiers under the code. Our evidence will also show that she did not fully disclose these disqualifiers on her application, which is also a violation of the requirements of 6-206 and 6-207. As a further reminder, as this Board is aware, this is a de novo hearing, so you'll be hearing the testimony anew and making your own independent decision apart from what the LRB's recommendation was. Ms. Hensley is represented by an attorney, Mr. Rob Spear. He may desire to make a brief opening himself. Once that is done, with your leave, Madam Chairwoman, I will swear in the witnesses and begin my presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll next have the attorney that's representing our applicant.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's my sincere privilege to be here before you and for Sarah Hensley. We're not going to paint over rotten wood this morning. Ms. Hensley has a background that's a challenge as far as trying to get a work permit in this county. She is a single mom. We expect to put forth evidence this morning. She has rehabilitated herself to the nth degree, has done very well raising a little boy on her own with no support or help from a father who is virtually absent. We're asking, I'm asking this morning, if the Commission would please look at the human side of this appeal. We're not going to sit here and argue law. It'd be a losing battle. Both my able opponent would probably outstrategize me on that point, and the facts and the posture of the action, they're against Sarah. But what we're asking for this morning is some compassion. We'd like to show the other side of the file and just ask for an open mind and a just result.
Thank you, Counselor. Can you tell me your name again?
My name is Robert Spear.
Robert Spear. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Hensley.
If you will be testifying in this hearing, or believe you may be testifying, would you at this time please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If so, say, "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Chair, I'd like to call Sergeant Bonnie Smith as my witness.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Could you please give your full name for the record?
Bonnie Smith.
And where are you employed, Sergeant Smith?
Cobb County Police Department, Regulatory Services Unit.
And what are your duties as far as your employment there at the Regulatory Services and Permits Unit?
We issue permits for everyone who's required in the alcohol industry in our county to have an alcohol work permit, and we also regulate those businesses that hold alcohol licenses.
And how long have you worked in that division of the Cobb Police Department?
Seven years.
Okay. Are you familiar with the applicant who is at issue today, Ms. Sarah Hensley?
Yes, she was in our office on April 27th of this year, making an application for the PBR, Live at the Battery, for an alcohol work permit.
Okay. And when someone comes in to make an application for an alcohol work permit, what exactly is the procedure? Are they given a written application to fill out, or how does that work?
Yes, we have a stack of applications in our office on the counter with some written direction, and they take an application, fill it out front and back. When they've had that completed, they were turned to our front window, where we take their ID and their money or payment for the application, and then we process it at that point. We review the application on the back because it does ask them to list any arrests they've ever had, so we can determine prior to them paying if there are any disqualifiers, or if there's any indication there may be some concern with their application prior to taking their money, because we don't do refunds once we've processed the application and run the criminal history. So, if we see something, we have a discussion with them prior, and let them know what the options are, get some clarification on what they may have. If we don't see anything that they've written on the back that is a concern to us, then we will go ahead and give it to our administrative staff. They run the criminal history, and then we look at what's on the criminal history, if there is one, and determine if they're eligible for the permit.
Now, you said something just a minute ago that I'd like to go back to just briefly, that there is a question on the back of the application that says, "List any arrests." Is that correct? What exactly does that say?
It says criminal history consent form, and then underneath that, in gray highlighted, it says, "List all arrests and citations below." It gives them 10 spaces to list the date of the offense, the county and state which it occurred, type of offense, and then the court disposition. And then below that, there's four paragraphs that let them know there's violation if they're not truthful on their application, and then they sign and date it stating they have been truthful. And it's given us consent to run the criminal history.
Did you find any problems with Ms. Hensley's criminal history once she turned in that application and you ran the criminal history?
Yes, we did. Once we processed it, ran the criminal history, we determined there was, in fact, a criminal history that reflected one... She only wrote one issue on the back. There was one arrest listed. We determined there were more than that in her criminal history and her background, and once we reviewed it, we determined she was not eligible based on the ordinance requirements for the permit.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, once you determined that there were two offenses, and what period of time would that have been under the code?
We looked back five years from the date of conviction of the disqualifiable offenses that are listed in the ordinance. So, if there's disqualifiers listed, we determine if they are, in fact, in that five-year look-back window. In this case, it was. She had two arrests that were disqualifiers.
Okay. And if I understand it correctly, under the GCIC, which I believe stands for the Georgia Criminal Information Center, you, as a law enforcement officer, are not allowed to disclose the exact nature of those offenses in a public forum. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But I assume that Ms. Hensley discussed that with you, or that was included on her application, what those offenses were?
She listed the one, and then we had others. And we had a discussion after. We determined that she was not eligible. I had a conversation with her at the table in our office and gave her options based on the disqualifying offenses.
Okay. And as a result of that conversation, what did she choose to do? I assume you denied the application?
Yes, it was administratively denied based on those disqualifiers. I went over the appeal process with her to appear in front of the License Review Board, and she did, in fact, go through that process. She filed her appeal. She appeared in front of the License Review Board, which they upheld 5 to 0 to not approve the application.
Madam Chair, that's all the questions I have for this witness.
Thank you. Does the applicant's counsel have any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Officer, so you have reviewed Sarah's criminal history thoroughly?
I have.
How many arrests has she have? Let's just go ahead and get this out in the open.
Okay.
Clear it up.
Eleven.
How many?
Eleven.
Eleven. Of all of those 11 arrests, what was the oldest one?
2004.
2004, which is 13 years ago. Of all those arrests, ma'am, is there one felony in there?
No.
Not a felony?
No.
Of all those arrests, is there any kind of drug charge?
There is one that potentially could be. I don't know all of the details on it, but the way it's listed on the history, it leads me to believe...
So, there isn't one? There's no conviction for any drug charges?
Let me review this a minute.
Okay, please do.
There was an arrest that leads me to believe, yes, it was involved, but it was null pross.
Null pross means dismissed?
Correct.
So, there's no conviction for any drug charges?
No, there is not.
No felonies?
No.
No drug charges?
No.
Are there any violent crimes in there in that whole printout?
Nope.
As a matter of fact, ma'am, courteously, I'm asking, those all relate to driving, don't they?
They do.
Driving on a suspended license were most of those charges, weren't they? The bulk of those arrests?
No.
Well, what were they for?
She has five DUI convictions.
Back from 2003?
2004 was her first.
2004. But no felonies, no violence, no drugs?
Correct.
All right. And when she completed this form, it asked for every detail of that printout you have?
Yes.
How many pages is that printout?
Sixteen.
How many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen pages?
Yes.
And Sarah's supposed to remember all the contents of all 16 pages when she's filling out an application?
She was there every time she was arrested.
Yes, ma'am. Is it possible she just didn't remember each and every detail of that report?
I don't know that, sir. I can't make that assumption.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions for Sergeant Smith? Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
You said there were 11 arrests, but five convictions? Or were they all convictions or arrests?
There's 11 arrests, and she was convicted of something in all 11 arrests.
Okay. Commissioner, if you heard the number five, I heard that there were five DUIs in 2004. Well, the oldest since 2004.
Her first arrest on her criminal history is showing 2004. Correct.
Madam Vice Chair, I think, and to keep Sergeant Smith from saying something that she doesn't really want to say because of the change in the rules...
she doesn't really want to say because of the change in the rules, I think the best thing to do, since Ms. Hensley's counsel appears to be willing to reveal what those are, I think it'd be better to wait until Ms. Hensley is at the stand and then find out what those are, because I think we're kind of putting Sergeant Smith in a position I don't think she wants to be in.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Commissioner.
I was just trying to clarify the number and.
Yeah, no, I think they're willing to give them to us, but I think that they need to come from them so that we follow law.
Right, thanks.
Commissioner Burrell, do you have any other questions? Commissioner Weatherford? Okay, thank you, Sergeant Smith.
Thank you.
That's all the witnesses that I have, Madam Chair. I'll turn this over to Mr. Spear now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. This time I'd call Ms. Sarah Hensley to the stand.
Thank you.
We need to swear her.
She's already sworn.
She's sworn, good. All right, Sarah, could you tell the commissioners your name, please?
Sarah Hensley.
All right, and what are you asking them for today?
A alcohol serving permit.
Could you speak up just a little bit for us?
Alcohol serving permit.
Okay, and where do you currently work?
PBR.
And what does that stand for?
Professional Bull Riders.
All right, and so not the beer, it stands for Professional Bull Riders. What do they do at that place?
It's kind of like a rodeo atmosphere. You ride bulls and line dancing and stuff.
So what are you currently doing at that employment?
I'm hosting currently.
Okay, and what would you like to do in that job, or at that place of employment?
Cocktail waitress.
Now, why are you asking? You've been turned down at the initial application by the police department, and then you got turned down by the review board for this. Why are you asking the commissioners to make an exception for you?
Because being a cocktail waitress, I could increase my income by about two to three hundred dollars a week, which would help a lot.
Okay, now, let's talk about your background briefly. You're a single mom?
Yes.
What's your son's name?
Dylan Hensley.
All right, and can we have exhibit two, please? I'm going out of order, please forgive me, ladies and gentlemen. All right, and those are pictures of you and your son?
Yes.
Here we go. Those are pictures of you and Dylan?
Yes.
All right, of course, he has a father, but where's his father?
He lives in Chattanooga.
Okay, and does he pay you any child support?
No, sir.
Were y'all ever married?
No.
Does he help you support Dylan at all?
No.
Okay. And then could we please have exhibit number three, please, sir? That's his birth certificate, you recognize that?
Yes.
Okay, and up at the top, what's Dylan's last name?
Hensley.
And that's your name, isn't it?
Correct.
So the father didn't take really responsibility for the child. My point is, you've been raising Dylan on your own for eight years.
Correct.
How have you been doing that?
Just working as much as I can, different jobs and whatnot.
And your license was suspended most of that time, wasn't it?
Correct.
And you live in Alabama, do you not?
I do.
All right, so how were you getting to work?
Driving.
Because you had to. Let's go into your Fulton County DUI court success. Could we have exhibit one, please, sir? As part of one of your DUI convictions, I believe the last one ever in your life, which was back in two thousand thirteen, I believe, you volunteered, actually, to enter into the DUI court program in Fulton County. Is that correct?
Correct.
How long is that program?
Almost a year.
All right, and so you completed, the commission would please note, everything here was verified and completed. You did all your meetings, clinical evaluation, DUI court, is that correct?
Correct.
Successfully completed it.
Correct.
Have you had a drop to drink since then?
No.
Do you plan to drink since then?
No.
Why not?
Because of everything that I went through.
Could you speak up?
Because of everything that I went through.
So if the commission grants you a work permit, were you going to be carrying alcohol this close to your face? You're not going to drink?
No, not at all.
Why is that?
I just, it's not worth it.
It's not worth it. All right, and this criminal record they're alluding to, can you tell us about that briefly? Give the commissioners a summary. When Madam Commissioner asked, have you been convicted of everything? What were these offenses, briefly? Could you explain it?
Well, I'm not a hundred percent sure on everything that I was convicted of.
You did what?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of everything that I was convicted on.
Okay. And they were pretty, some of them were pretty old?
Yes.
And you're not sure exactly what your lawyer got done on most of them?
Correct.
Some of them actually were dismissed, were they not?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to tell these honorable commissioners before you conclude your statement or your testimony?
Just that it would really help a lot, like financially, raising my son, and this would help significantly, so.
Okay. And you've never committed a felony?
No, no.
Never been convicted of a felony?
No.
Never been arrested for drugs or convicted of drugs?
No.
Okay. And you're asking, basically, you're asking for a work permit to earn more money to support your child, aren't you?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Spear.
Thank you, ma'am.
Attorney Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hensley, I'm going to ask you a question that I normally ask at the end of my cross-examination of people in your situation. And before I do that, I do want to commend you on raising your child. I know that's a difficult situation to be in, and you're to be commended for that.
Thank you.
My question to you, though, is, do you understand why this board might have concerns about entrusting the privilege of serving alcohol in Cobb County to someone with your admitted history with abusing alcohol?
Yes, sir, I completely understand a hundred percent, but, you know, I've been sober since the program, and also I've been serving alcohol in Alabama since.
Okay. Where were you serving in Alabama?
I worked at a park and a lodge, DeSoto State Park, for a while, and I served alcohol there.
And are you required to have a work permit in Alabama to serve alcohol?
You have to go through a class.
Okay. But do they look into your background before they grant you a work permit to serve alcohol in Alabama?
I don't think so. I think it's just the classes you have to take.
Okay, so they were not aware of your history when they granted you that permit?
No, sir.
And I think I also heard you say that it would not be a problem with you potentially drinking alcohol on the job if you were entrusted with a work permit. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's a hundred percent correct.
But do you understand that you, if you were granted an alcohol work permit, would be the last line of defense for other people getting alcohol?
Yeah, I completely understand that.
Such as an underage person, a person who had already been over-served, anybody that does not need to get alcohol?
Yes, sir, I've taken the Safe Serve classes, so I'm completely aware of that.
Do you understand that the main concern with granting an alcohol work permit is that we entrust that privilege to people who follow the rules?
Yes, sir, I understand.
And you understand that checking IDs and making sure that people that don't need to get alcohol don't get it is part of following the rules?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell me again why you did not fully disclose your criminal history on this application?
Because you were supposed to list every single arrest you've ever had, and I don't remember everything that I've ever been arrested for, and I don't remember the dates.
At the time you filled out this application, were you aware that you had multiple offenses in your background?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to hand you, and I've shown this to Mr. Spear, the original application that you filled out. This is the second page of this, and I already had Sergeant Smith read that. Could you read what it says at the top, please?
The list all arrests and citations?
And that's in bold?
Yes.
Shaded, so you really can't miss it, can you?
No.
And what did you write?
I wrote the 2013 Fulton County DUI arrest, but I didn't even write the disposition because I wasn't really sure exactly what all of that meant, and.
But that was one offense, correct?
It was, yes.
And you were aware that you had multiple offenses?
I was, yes, but I didn't remember everything, or the dates or anything.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Sorry.
Did you attempt to make any indication on this application that you knew you had multiple other offenses in your history, but that you did not maybe remember the dates or exactly what they were? Ms. Hensley, is there any other type of job that you could have that maybe you've gone to school for, or that you'd like to train for, that would not put you in a position of serving alcohol, that could achieve your financial goals to support your child?
Yes, sir, right now, though, I'm currently working in a small medical supply office during the week, and then I do PBR on the weekends, but I'm also going to school to be a paralegal, and so I haven't completed that program yet, but as soon as I'm finished, that's what I want to pursue.
In any of your previous DUIs, was there an accident involved? So there was no collision with another vehicle, no hit-and-run, anything like that?
There was, but it was resolved. It wasn't like, it wasn't anything, it wasn't an issue.
Okay.
Not a hit-and-run or anything like that.
But there was an accident?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Attorney Hensley. Does the board have any questions? Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Ms. Hensley, I'm a little confused. You live in Fort Payne, but you work here?
Yes, sir, I don't know if you're familiar with the Fort Payne area?
I am very familiar.
But it's so small, there's no jobs there. Even the medical supply office that I work in, I have to drive an hour in the other direction for that job. So if you want any type of job, or a good job in that area, you have to commute.
Yeah, that's at least a two-hour commute.
It is.
And where are you at school?
Northeast Alabama Community College.
Okay. So you go to school during the week and drive over here on the weekends to work, is that what you're saying?
I work in a small medical supply office during the week, and then on the weekends, I work this job, and then my school, I do it online. I only have to go to campus for like midterms and finals.
Where's the medical supply office?
In Scottsboro, Alabama.
Well, that's about an hour the other way.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you currently have a license?
Yes, sir.
In the original application, you listed only the 2013 DUI, not the Cobb County DUI?
I really wasn't for sure the dates and everything on that, and I wasn't sure what to list. I wasn't sure about the disposition in all of those cases, and so I just left it blank.
I'm assuming, and you don't have to answer this, but some of these convictions for driving were underage for alcohol, if there were alcohol.
Underage, yes, sir.
Underage drinking?
Yes.
Were a lot of these in Alabama, or were they in Georgia?
They were Georgia.
So you must have been over in Georgia quite a bit?
Yeah, I come over here some.
All right. I still have a question.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrell?
Yeah, I too had some questions to clarify, living in Alabama and going to school and working here, but I think you clarified those, and I'm still a little confused on the number of arrests and which were convictions of all of them.
I'm still confused on that. I don't know which ones were, I was convicted on and which ones I wasn't.
Well, it just, you only listed one conviction?
Yes, ma'am.
Out of eleven arrests that you've, or convictions that you've admitted to, and that kind of concerns me. I know the last one that was in Cobb was in 2014?
Yes, ma'am.
And that was, and you went through the Fulton County DUI court in, after the 13 arrest, 2013 in Fulton?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the Cobb arrest was after the Fulton one, when you were in DUI court? Or at the same time, or after?
I think I got arrested for the DUI, but I hadn't been to court on it before I got arrested in Cobb County, and then I guess they just put it all in one as long as I finished. Or is that?
Okay, because on your application, or on your questionnaire, it has seven years from the Fulton County arrest and five years from the Cobb County.
Yes.
And tell me again, I know your attorney showed the certificate from Fulton County DUI court, but what was the date when it was completed?
The DUI court? I think it might have been 2014? Was the date that it was completed in 2014?
Okay, because this is Cobb, March of 14, so.
That's when I was convicted, not arrested.
Right, okay, I got you.
And I was already in the program, I think, at the time, and they just asked me to finish the program.
So once you completed the program in Fulton, you haven't had any arrests or convictions or anything to drink?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Can you tell me what a valid ID looks like?
A what?
A valid ID in Georgia.
Yes, it has the seal on it, and it, the hologram.
Where's the date of birth?
It's located under the expiration.
And what happens if the license is oriented this way?
That means that you're under 21.
Okay. I'm having a hard time with the fact that you don't remember the arrests. I mean, one of the things that we're talking about here is attention to detail, the detail being whether or not it's a valid ID. Now, you can describe to me, but what you say is when you filled out the application, you weren't sure, so you just didn't do it. Well, what's going to happen if you look at an ID and you're not sure if it's valid? Because you look at the person, you look at the ID, and you think it's fake, are you just going to not do anything? And so I have a problem with that, okay? As Mr. Hensley said, this is a privilege, and you are the last stop from an underage person getting alcohol. And where the PBR is located at the Battery and at the stadium, it is probably the most prolific place where people are trying to use false IDs. Our police force is doing a phenomenal job in capturing them, getting the IDs, and so I'm just, I have a hard time knowing the fact that you filled out an application that clearly states all arrests, and through your testimony, you said, well, you weren't sure, so you didn't put it on there. So I'm just wondering what's going to happen if all of a sudden you see one of these fake IDs that I know are out there at the Battery, because the police out there have a ring of them, and so I'm concerned about the attention to detail. So right now, I cannot support this moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Ms. Hemsley.
In, in some situations where we've had people that have had a, had a colorful past, um, they not only share, um, the positive things that they're doing beyond it, but they also demonstrate some remorse for the impact of their actions. They, um, perhaps show a level of appreciation for even be, being able to consider the consideration for their application in light of some of the challenges that they've had. Um, I don't think that's necessarily a requirement, but, um, due to the level of risk that's involved with driving under the influence to the general public, um, it, it's, it's very difficult to understand how you grasp that impact that you have in, to the public, or you have had. Um, it's, it's difficult, I guess, to grasp the turn of events in you beyond just looking that, that you went to DUI court. If I, if I didn't see this on paper, if you just didn't tell me that, there's, it's very difficult to, to grasp that internal change. Perhaps it's there, though, because you did state you haven't had a drink, um, since you've gone to the program. And if I look at the dates here, um, I believe it was in April or March of 2014, following the arrest in, um, in Cobb County, when you had the Cobb County incident. That follows the Fulton County incident. Um, can you clarify again? You did not participate in the DUI program until after the Cobb County arrest?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I don't know if it's appropriate time, perhaps I should have asked counsel, but I would like to see the application, the application question that asks for you to fill out the information, just so I can remind myself of the bold letters and the request of information. Is this the, excuse me, is this the original, is this the application?
That is the original, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, if we can just take a moment, I'm sure some other commissioners may wanna take a look.
Um, could I ask a quick question?
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Hensley, are you in any, um, programs like AA?
Um, I do go to AA, yes, sir.
How often?
Um, I don't go as much as I used to, um, but I at least try to go one spot.
You know, I believe the text may have been changed. I remember looking at this form a while ago where there was a paragraph or a number of sentences or lines that requested this information, but here it's, it's plain as day, it's as plain as day, where it's saying, list all arrests and citations. When you filled out this form, did you think to ask a clerk or anyone working at the application office about, um, how you would address prior your arrest?
I know it was, um, probably stupid of me at the time. I, I didn't, um, I just assumed that, um, you know, they were gonna run the background anyways, just by me listing one, and that they would see and let me know what I needed to write on my application, um, but.
Okay. Have you sought other employment outside of where you're working now?
Um, it's, it's really hard to get employment right now, anywhere.
Yes, okay. How long have you been working where you are now?
Um, since it opened, um, at PBR.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, since it opened in May.
In May.
I have one more question while you're, um, conversing over there. Um, as part of your participation in AA, do you have a sponsor?
Yes, I do.
How often do you talk to your sponsor?
Um, I, I talk to my sponsor whenever I go to meetings, um.
So once a month?
About once a month, yes.
Oh, I asked, as part of the AA program, um, participants are given a sponsor, and I asked how often she spoke to her sponsor.
When do you expect, Miss Hensley, to complete your, uh, paralegal school?
Um, well, I have one class left to go, um, so hopefully at the end of this semester.
Then you expect to do that full-time instead of this, or you still expect to do both?
Uh, paralegal?
Yeah.
Um, I would like to, yeah, if I could find employment.
Commissioner Burrell?
Waitress as well?
Um, I guess that, um, depends on the income, the pay rate.
Okay.
If I need another job.
Okay. Okay. No other commissioners have any questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Hemsley.
And Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Spear may have a couple of redirect questions with your leave.
Yes.
Just to clear a few things up, Madam Chairman, if I could, Chair, Chairperson, excuse me. Uh, the form that they're alluding to where you list all of your arrests, um, it asks for specific dates and, and occurrences, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and I'm gonna read for a minute. At the bottom, it says, "I have read and understand that any falsehood or half-truth submitted in this application is a felony." So if you had completed it and weren't exactly correct, you could be prosecuted for a felony, is that correct?
Um, well, I didn't know that at the time, but I guess so if it's.
So that's why you didn't put any wrong information, you were scared to finish it out, you just put what you knew to be correct, isn't it?
I did put what I knew to be correct, yes.
Thank you. Did you in any way, uh, try to deceive this, this commission or the, or the county or the police department at all?
No, not at all.
So as a matter of fact, if you completed it and made something wrong in here, you'd be a felon, wouldn't you?
Yeah, looks that way.
So it's better to leave it blank than to lie?
I thought so.
Okay. And then I'm referring to Exhibit One, completion of the pro, of the Fulton County DUI Court Program. Uh, Madam Commissioner Burrell had asked when you completed it, and now, I'm gonna, may I approach? Thank you. What's the date right there, Sarah?
Twenty fifteen.
Nineteen November twenty fifteen.
Correct.
And I believe this is a twenty-four-month program, wasn't it? Did you live in Fulton County at the time?
I did.
So I think the DUI in Cobb started in Cobb, but it was transferred for sentencing to Fulton's program, 'cause you lived in Fulton, correct?
Yes.
And it was, I think it was Judge Melanie Clayton that transferred you down to Fulton to Judge, I think, Diane Besson, was it not? So you did the program in Fulton County?
Yes.
So you were sentenced in Cobb and did that program too as well in Fulton?
Yes.
And as far as these eleven arrests, uh, you can't remember each date or time? Why was that? During that time period, what was going on?
Um, I don't know, I was just working a lot. I don't, I mean, I don't really remember.
Working all the time, how many week hours a week were you working to support Dylan?
A lot.
Driving back and forth from here to Fort Payne where Dylan lives with your, your mother, and your mother was helping, helping keep him some?
Yeah, she helped keep him.
And you're exhausted the whole time, just trying to survive, weren't you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Vice Chair, one more question.
One moment, I see Attorney Hemsley coming up. Um, the applicant's counsel had a redirect, so I don't know if Attorney Hemsley had redirect also, and then we'll come back to Commissioner questions.
If that's all right, just a couple of recross questions, yes. Uh, Ms. Hensley, when you filled out this application, listing your arrest that you, that you listed, at that time, were you aware that the Cobb County Alcohol Code states that if you had two prior DUI convictions in the previous five years, that that would disqualify you from obtaining an alcohol work permit?
No, sir, I was not aware at that time, no.
Okay. Are, are you aware that you're expected to know the provisions of the Cobb Alcohol Code in order to be entrusted with an alcohol work permit or an alcohol license?
Um, I didn't know that I was supposed to know all of the codes, no.
Okay. So you listed the, the offense that occurred in Fulton, but you didn't remember the most recent conviction in Cobb County?
I, I didn't remember the dates, no.
Okay. One final question. What is PBR's policy regarding alcohol sales?
Um.
Do you ID everybody? What do you do?
Yeah, you're supposed to ID everybody. Um, they're ID'd at the door, um, before they come in, and they get a bracelet if they're, um, um, over twenty-one.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney. Commissioner Oat?
Um, Sam, could you give her the, um, the blue page? I'd like you to read the paragraph on the bottom before you signed it.
Um.
And read it so that everyone can hear it.
That I hereby authorize the Cobb County Police Department to receive, um, any criminal history, um, record information pertaining to me, which may be in the files of any local and/or state criminal justice agency.
All right, what about the part that it says that I affirm? The part that your attorney referred to, that this is, um, complete answer?
I have read and understood that any falsehood or half-truth submitted in this application is a felony and will render me ineligible to serve alcoholic beverages or be employed by a pawn shop in this county.
Okay, so explain to me how not putting on that application, that on the top says you will put everything on there, how is not putting it on there any different than putting incomplete information? Once you signed it, you verified that that was all the information you knew about, yet you've told us here at this hearing that you knew that there were other things that you did not put on there. So how is that any different?
Um, I don't know, sir, I'm sorry. I mean, I just really didn't know, um, all of my offenses at the time, or that they.
But you knew that there were offenses that you were not putting on there, that you intentionally did not list?
Yes, I knew that at the time, but I knew that they would run my record, and so that's why I put the one, so they would run it.
Right, but what, when you signed it, you knew that there was information you had not put on there?
Correct.
Okay.
Do the commissioners have any other questions? Yeah, I'll turn this back over to you, Attorney Hemsley.
I, I'll waive my opening and allow Mr. Spear to do any closing statement he may have unless you have another witness. Are you?
Sir, you can come this way.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hemsley, you have a seat.
Ladies and gentlemen, I normally have some long scripted closing argument when I have trials and speak to jurors or any tribunal who makes serious decisions as yourselves, but I do not have one for this case because I'm speaking from my heart. I have known, uh, this young lady professionally for, since 2010. She came into my office in shambles, uh, had been driving, it was rather a unique situation, we've heard from her testimony during the hearing, driving two states, uh, to, to support herself, uh, to get by in the world. That is no justification, ladies and gentlemen, for, uh, getting arrested and driving on a suspended license, and each and every question asked by each of these honorable commissioners in this hearing have been apt, appropriate, and precise, and I've expected them. Uh, what I am saying for Sarah is that we're asking the commission to make an exception because an exception is warranted in this case. Seven years ago, when she came into my office, she was, we thought, hopeless. My assistant at the time, who used to work in the State Court of Cobb County, Ms. Baggett, uh, used to joke about her, called her Calamity Jane when she'd walk out the door. But I have seen her pull herself up from the mud and make something of herself. I personally have seen it as her lawyer. Uh, the last mishap she had was down in Brookhaven. I personally went down there. She was charged with driving on a suspended license. She astonished me and said, "I've got something to show you," and she showed me a valid Alabama driver's license, and I took it into the prosecutor, and they dismissed the charge, reduced it to something else, which was a minor ticket. I am speaking from my heart without the benefit of some outline or long-drawn-out speech that I don't, and I'm gonna quote, uh, a very, very honorable judge in Gwinnett County, Howard Cook. Years ago, when I was a brand-new lawyer, he said, "I don't believe in throwaways." And you know what? I don't either. After twenty-eight years of practicing law, I'm not Bill Gates. I don't make a lot of money. I have to have some compassion, or I wouldn't put my, uh, britches and shoes on every morning, getting out of bed and heading to some court or honorable tribunal such as yourselves to go to bat for people. I have to believe in them. Uh, I believe in this young lady, and I have seen her grow up. There's a lot in this record I'm not gonna discuss about where she came from, and it wasn't PBR, and she's worked herself into a good Christian home for this young, this young boy Dylan, who I've met and seen two or three times since. Uh, she, he has no fatherly support, she has no financial support from this biological father whatsoever. That's the reason, the only reason I showed the, the birth certificate, is to show that the little boy has her name. Uh, she is struggling, and we're just asking for an exception. Uh, not everything fits in a nice square, or what is it, a little, little square box or whatever, and this, this is one of those cases that doesn't. I truly believe that Sarah didn't mean to lie, meant no criminal intent when she filled out the application. She's a timid person, uh, and I think she just was befuddled. She has completed the Fulton County DUI Court Program, which as this county's program is, is very rigid, uh, and strict. She did that successfully, and quite frankly, I can attest, she has not called me on any alcohol-related incidents since. The only fracas she had was on the record was in Brookhaven, and we cleared that up because she has a valid driver's license. I thank you for your time, and I'm asking you to have compassion and allow her to have a work permit to earn more money to help raise her son. And again, I thank you all for having me here, and it's been a privilege.
Thank you, Attorney Hemsley. Attorney Hemsley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, first of all, I would like to, again, commend this young lady for trying to get her act together, get her life together. She's clearly an intelligent person who's working hard to put herself on the right path, and I want to commend Mr. Spears for helping her attempt to do that, and clearly she's made strides in that direction. My concern is that particularly in a case like this, it is my view that it is this Board's responsibility to not put people in a position to fail, especially when they are trying to achieve such a noble goal. And as Commissioner Oat rightly pointed out, the PBR is a place where you can fail really quickly, and if you are, as to, to quote Mr. Spear, if you're timid, if you're befuddled, if you're tired, and she's clearly got a lot on her plate, those are the times in my experience when things get overlooked, when IDs are not checked, when fake IDs are not identified, when bad things happen that can lead to very tragic results. And this, quite frankly, is a very lucky young lady who, considering her history, hasn't had a, a much worse outcome with some of these offenses, as we all know. And the last thing we want to have happen is anyone leaving a Braves game or leaving any other establishment, having imbibed when they shouldn't have and going out and severely injuring or killing somebody on our roads here in Cobb County. So, uh, from my perspective, I see at best a, a cavalier attitude towards some of these requirements. It may be because she's tired, it may be because she doesn't understand all of the requirements in front of her, but for whatever reason, uh, this application, application gives me great pause personally. But as always, I will leave this decision in the good judgment of this body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Hemsley. Sometimes we, um, wait until after there's a motion and a second to have conversation. Um, typically, when we've had, um, these hearings in the past, the permit has followed the location, but since that process has changed, it really lends itself to a much more, I guess, collaborative process in determining the outcome. Um, so with that, I'm going to allow each commissioner to share their feedback with respect to this application, and we'll come up with, um, a, a response together. I've, yes, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Oat.
Okay. Um, as I mentioned, um, the location, and I know the location doesn't go with it, but one of the things I would ask the, the commissioners to consider is with the use of the wristbands, I wonder if the, the, um, the servers, if their guard is not a little bit down, because they, if you see a wristband, you can make the assumption that someone's already checked an ID. So if you have a question, or if you're busy, if you're tired, um, you may not do as thorough a check as you would have done if they don't have a wristband. I was not aware that that's how PBR operated. I know that the Yard House operates that way. Um, and I'm actually having a meeting with all of the restaurant owners this afternoon, and we're gonna have a conversation about that, because I am a little bit concerned not finding out that that's how it operates with the wristbands. Um, because I know that, uh, for example, at the Yard House, when you go in, you get a wristband if you're on the outside, but when you go on the inside, the wristbands don't count. So I have a little bit of concern about that. Um, as I also mentioned, um, we're talking about an environment, and, and I know it doesn't go with the location, but in this particular case, the location is important, because I can tell you that, um, our police officers and our county staff have had to be extremely extra vigilant in this area. have had to be extremely extra vigilant in this area to prevent underage alcohol sales. You can take all the restaurants and all the other places around the county, but this is a concentrated area where you have tens of thousands of people, and we have a key ring full of fake IDs that our police officers have gotten and stopped underage people from drinking. So of all the areas in the county, this is one of the most critical areas for this board to know that the people that are given servers permits are going to be 100% thorough and extremely attentive to the details. And when I listen to the testimony, that's not the case here. We have an application that was impartially or partially filled out knowingly. Information was not put on there. We have, we have an applicant who doesn't even remember all the incidents that she was involved in when she broke the law. So I just, I cannot support this, knowing the environment that we're talking about. I mean, I guess, I commend her for her efforts in raising her son without any assistance from the biological father, but, but that's not what we're here to decide. We're here to decide the safety of the people in Cobb County. And at the stadium complex, we have children, we have families. We cannot afford to have someone make a mistake, so I cannot support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Well, I too have concerns mainly on the number of arrests and convictions that were not listed truthfully and honestly on the application. And I'd also commend Ms. Hensley for, you know, raising her son and trying to provide with the jobs and responsibilities that come with being a mom. But it's, it's too many for me to support.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Yeah, this is, this is tough as well for all of us. Sometimes we get cases where it's not black and white, and sometimes we make decisions based on our testimony and what we've heard. I remember one very vividly that had some backgrounds that were issue, but once we heard the facts, we decided that there were circumstances surrounding that. And I don't quite share, Commissioner Ott's concern with the wristband. We've used that many years at Wakeboard the past weekend for underage. I mean, it works pretty well. That, to me, takes a lot of responsibility off the servers, even though there are ways to slip through it. So, but a server license, and again, I may be wrong, but I don't think it's limited to one location, would give the opportunity to go anywhere. So where they may not have such strict requirements. And I won't mention what I've discerned, but, you know, I was surprised at the number of convictions, I guess, and actually the age of the applicant. I thought she was actually a different age. So some of these were done well into adult areas and adult age. And I know that people try to get up and try to do things better, and I commend her for doing that. That coupled with the fact that, you know, hopefully in three months, she'll complete her education and move on to bigger and better things. I think just based on the fact of the application, the fact of the admitting of the different things, I find it difficult, even though I want to, to support it based on the facts.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford. As has been shared, there's a lot going on here with this applicant. And there's a lot that we have to be responsible for as commissioners. We're here, and it's, it's not an enviable position to be responsible for one individual and to, and to balance that with the responsibility to a public as a whole. Because our duties are just to serve the public. But that doesn't mean there isn't concern and compassion for each of the individuals that are here. I too, like the other commissioners, had some concern. But I think we live in a world where, without us all having second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth chances beyond that, none of us would be in the situations that we're in. Some of our challenges or misdeeds may not be as colorful as others, but we've all have several chances in life that allow us to do the things that we do. Now, with those opportunities, there come limitations. But there's a saving grace here for me. It's the fact that you went to a DUI court program. As commissioners, we support our DUI court program, and some of us have been to those graduations. And we hear the stories of the individuals who participate in it. We also speak with judges and the administrators and employees of those programs who testify to the level of diligence that goes into the program and the transformation that takes place among the participants that are there. For us to deny this application, for one, let me think of the DUI court, they don't accept everyone. That's one thing that I've learned. It's really, I consider it chosen few who have such a unique opportunity to be guided through transformation. And I go to those graduations, and I, smiling and I'm supporting the graduates with confidence that they have been transformed through that program. So it seems somewhat hypocritical for me to have confidence in that program and for me to turn around and say, "Well, you know what? It wasn't enough." When those who are responsible for safeguarding the laws in our communities, when it comes to these type of events, have entrusted your participation in that program. To me, my confidence, I have confidence in, I have to have confidence in all people, regardless of their past. But my greater confidence, my confidence is in some of the accomplishments that you've had along the way. But I have, I have confidence in our DUI court program, that it does what it's supposed to do, and that we don't have to make people have to continue to serve their time after they've served their time, right? So, you know, considering, at what point, maybe the point for us is five years. And I think because of the checkered past, we say, "Well, we can't consider it." We've had cases where people have had DUI incidents in less than five years. Their circumstances are a lot different. This is probably the most colorful past. But, you know, is five years enough time? Has there been enough transformation in less than five years? For me, I don't think we've had DUI cases where people have come up and said they participated in the DUI court program. For me, that makes me lean towards looking at the timeline of your participation in that program. And I have some confidence in its effectiveness. So my views perhaps differ from the board with respect to this. And it's not of the majority opinion, so I'm going to refrain, I'm the chair, but I, again, I share this as collaborative. I would like for at least the commissioners to consider our DUI court program and the work that it does. And to consider her participation in that and our support of that program. And perhaps reconsider this applicant in light of that as we move forward and make a motion.
I'm not sure, Mr. Hensley or our staff, what, what is the length of a license that we issue it? Is it, is it a year, two years, or, I'm sorry, sorry? I forget.
The permit is good for one year from the date of issuance, so they renew every year. And it's from the date that, you know, hers will expire March, I'm sorry, April 27, 2018, because that's the date she applied. And then she'll come back to renew.
Are there ways to put conditions on those, such as you must attend AA or something like that? Or is it just a straight, we don't?
Not as far as I'm concerned.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, but it's good for one year. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to cut you off as much as I wanted to answer your question. It's that there have been times when we've put, we, as the board, have put conditions on the permit, done everything from probation or had other, had, we've had considerations with respect to the permit. Commissioner Ott?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments about DUI court, but that was not, and Commissioner Burrow will correct me if I'm wrong, but that was not what Commissioner Burrow and I said our issue was. Our issue is 11 arrests, one put on the application. So the application was not filled out properly, okay? Attention to detail. It was, I totally agree with you about the DUI court, but that was not really the basis for this discussion today, all right? And so not granting the license is not an indictment of the DUI court. At least from my perspective, what I have a problem with is the importance of attention to detail with the fact that they, that the servers are the last line of defense, as we've heard Mr. Hensley say so many times. And the application, she has testified she did not fill it out properly, knowing that she was not putting all the information on there. This, this is not about the two DUIs. This is, this is more about that. Okay, and so when we're talking about checking dates on licenses, you know, and looking at a license to see, is it really a valid license? And like I said, we could show you the ring of all the fake IDs that have been collected at the battery. So it is something that requires extra diligence. And so I agree with the DUI court, but that's not really, from my perspective, that's not the issue here today.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that, Commissioner. You know, I was troubled too when I looked at the application. And then when I heard her explanation, albeit it's not our reasoning, one thing that really took me was when you asked her to read the application. And when she read it, it gave, there was text that said it provided the office permission to run a background check. And from listening to the applicant, you know, her reasoning was she expected them to find it if she put it there because she knew from the form they were going to run the background check. So while we might impugn her for saying that she was not being honest, I think she has already explained her reasoning for why. She listed things the way that they were, and her reasoning may not have been as egregious as we have stated.
Right, but she also did not ask the question. And that's, my concern is, if you're not sure and you're signing your name to it, and, and so when it comes down to checking a license, if you're not sure, I don't want someone to make a guess. All right, and so I understand what you're saying, but if you're not sure and you're the last line of defense, you need to be asking the question, "Hey, can you come look at this?" or "I'm not sure about this," and that's where my concern is, so.
I, I agree with you, but again, I never heard her say she wasn't sure. She said she wasn't sure on the dates, but she never questioned whether or not she should list all of them. She seemed to have confidence, again, in that if she wrote the one down, that the rest would be found out because she was open about the one, and the application said that she knew she was going to run the background check.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we uphold the License Review Board's decision to deny the issuance of a service permit.
Second. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Just a point of question. Yeah, I completely agree with, with all our fellow commissioners. Commissioner Ott makes a valid point, and you make valid points. And I do certainly believe in second chances and giving people a chance. The fact that it's kind of swaying me is the fact it would be good for eight months, and that would give the person time to finish her classes and all that, and they wouldn't have to go through it again. And when you sign something, it does say in there that you are going to have your background run. So, you know, I'm kind of waffling either way right now. I do have a question for the attorney. If it's two-two, what do we do?
I'll look at the rules, but my understanding is just probably going to come back and rehearing for the chairman. In the meantime, the decision of the LRB would stand, so.
And Commissioner Weatherford, I understand what you're saying about the eight months, but it only takes one time. It could be a month. It could be a three-month license. It doesn't matter how long it is. It takes one mistake for one drunk driver to go out and kill someone. So to say that eight months, one month, it doesn't matter. One mistake and someone can die. So I just, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I just, you know, I don't think that the length of, whether it's less than a year or not, is important here because we're talking, you know, you can make one mistake and it doesn't matter how long the license is.
Point taken.
Any other?
Any further discussion? Well, we have an outstanding motion. If there's no more conversation about it, we will call the question. And I need to change my vote, actually. I meant no to, I don't know how to do that. Can you modify my? Thank you. Okay, call the question? Okay, the request for the permit fails, three to one. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to tab 15. Why don't we provide, excuse me, yes, I'm sorry. You may be excused. Why don't we, why don't we give, why don't we wait about a couple minutes and give the applicants some time to? Yeah, gather yourself and be excused. Yes, thank you. We'll wait a couple minutes for it. I did say a couple minutes. Wait one more minute. All right, we will zoom our meeting and go to the final portion of our meeting, which is for the Commissioner address. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Ott.
Thank you. I just have two. First one is, I will be having my first town hall of the, if you want to call it the town hall season, on August 17, Thursday night at 7:00 at the East Cobb Library. And then I would like to congratulate Walton High School on the opening and the ribbon cutting of the brand-new classroom building, which the students got to enjoy the first day of school.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to congratulate Sweet Hut on their grand opening this past Saturday in Kennesaw, 2795 Chastain Meadows Parkway. Features over 100 bakery products and signature teas, drinks, and sandwiches. If you have a sweet tooth, stop by. Also, thank you once again to the Atlanta Braves Foundation for renovating Field Two at Harrison Park, which is now called the Chipper Jones Field. It was a great day, Saturday, celebrating with Braves alumni and current players and the Braves staff. The field looks great. It's, the Braves have served as an inspiration to many Little League players that attended, and it was, I want to also thank our Parks and Rec team and staff for all their hard work in, and the Braves for renovating Harrison Park Field. So it, it was a lot of fun, and I think they have some video of me throwing out a first pitch. Yeah, but to the right. It was a ball, for sure. No strikes. Also, I'd like to congratulate Mountain View Elementary on their brand new school on Sandy Plains. It is beautiful. And everything, Davis Road, everything was opened before the first day of school. And traffic is moving quickly around there. And I'd also like to thank the public for their patience in all the road improvements and construction in that area. But it's well worth it after you, if you go by the new Mountain View. On August the 12th, the Keep Cobb Beautiful will be hosting the Teacher Supply Storehouse, which is a nonprofit group dedicated to aiding and providing materials to students. If you are a teacher in Cobb or Marietta City and have your ID, you can go by and get free materials for your classroom. It's from eight to 10:30 Saturday morning, August 12. And you can go to cobbkt12.org/teachersupplystore for more information. Also, on eight, on August 24th, which is a Thursday, from five to seven, Cobb DOT and the City of Marietta Public Works will be holding a public information open house at the Musministry's Community Room, 1407 Cobb Parkway for the replacement of the old 41 Highway CSX Railroad Bridge just north of the intersection of Church Street and Bell's Ferry. You're welcome to come and view the project, ask questions, and provide comments. We will have written comment sheets for your input. Again, it's August 24th, Thursday, from five to seven, at Musministry's Community Room. And then on this, the Citizens Public Safety Academy is still taking applications for its fall class until this Friday. Until Friday, August 25th, sorry. The 14-week program gives Cobb citizens an insider look into the various entries that comprise the Department of Public Safety. And if you would like to participate, you do have to either live or work in Cobb for the Cobb County Government or schools and be at least 21 years of age. You can contact Mallory Wheat at 770-590-5650. I went through this program in 2000, and it is a great resource for learning all about Cobb County public safety. And I'm sure you can guess, the K-9 Day was my favorite.
Thank you. That's all I have. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just a few announcements. I wanted to commend Chief Register yesterday on his presentation on the processes and the follow-up on the International Association Chief Police study, and progress has been made. It was very impressive. And I feel very comfortable about the way our department is running and the way it's headed. On that note, on Monday, August 14th, from 9:30 to 11:00, he will be hosting Chief Register A Faith Forum, inviting all pastors from any faith to attend, and that will be at the Public Safety Training Facility off of County Services Road. You do need to RSVP by Friday to berry.little@cobbcounty.org. Berry.little@cobbcounty.org. The first of the kind for Cobb County, and I'm looking forward to a lot of attendees on that. Again, that's Monday, August 14th, from 9:30 to 11:00. Faith Forum for all pastors to get together and learn how we can work together in this county. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. With respect to District Four, tonight, as was shared during the proclamation, we have our block party in conjunction with National Night Out. And that will be held at the South Cobb Recreation Center from 5:30 PM to 8 o'clock PM. A few other events going on in the district. We have Mableton Farmers Market, which will be open through August 24th. It's open every Thursday from 8:30 to 12:30 PM at the Mableton, excuse me, at the Maple House Complex in Mableton. I don't know why I did this. I don't like heights. I can barely swim, and yet I signed up to take the plunge, which is to raise money for a nonprofit or worthy cause here in Cobb County. I'm personally representing Sweet Water Mission, which serves families here in Cobb County, particularly in addressing hunger insecurity, food insecurity here in the county, but they help with a myriad of other things as far as providing clothing and job assistance. And the Celebrity Punge will have a lot of leaders representing different organizations, and it will take place at Whitewater on Thursday at 6:00 PM. If you want to join me and, and help me get over that fear right before I get on the slide, which I probably should have seen before I signed up for this, please come out and join. You can also donate money by going on to sweetwatermission.org backslash celebrityprunge, and you can donate as much as you want or as little as you want to help out a much needed, needed cause in our community.
Commissioner Weatherford told me before the meeting that he was willing to join you.
Thank you. Did you say he's willing to slide for me?
No, join you.
Join me. Oh, okay.
I'll be at the end waiting.
Now, that, that's encouragement. With a big donation. Hmm, that is encouragement. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to just encourage you to sign up for my newsletter. There are a lot of events going on. In fact, the last one that I'll share is at the end of this. May I, I'll share two more. At the end of this month, I'll have a HOA boot camp on Saturday, August 26, 2017. And that's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which will be held at the Smyrna Community Center, which is now in District Four in light of the redrawing of the lines at the top of this month. Last thing is, I really want to take time to recognize all of the efforts done by public safety and members of the community in cleaning up the district. Just this past Saturday, we had a significant cleanup effort of a whole, over 100 volunteers in conjunction with 100 Black Men of Atlanta, our Police Precinct Two, and others, Word of Faith, and also residents along the Six Flags or now Riverside Drive area. And we saw that we recognized, we thrive on Riverside Drive with Monica Delancey, and she's also been very involved in cleaning up that corridor. I want to thank you for your robust efforts this past weekend. The area looks great. And that was preceded by a cleanup along the Legacy of Riverline Community, which took place just the prior weekend. So I want to thank Keep Cobb Beautiful for all of your efforts in the community for keeping our, our community clean. With that, I also want to thank staff for your efforts for keeping me in line so that I can help in heading today's meeting. I appreciate the Board of Commissioners for coming together, particularly in dealing with that last tough hearing that we just had. With that, I'm going to turn things over to you, County Manager, if you have any comments you want to share before we close.
No, ma'am, Commissioner. Actually, you set a record today for the speed of the meeting prior to the hearing. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.